Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get ready to get started about one minute.
Did Mark on there yet?
Yes, Mark Stone. Okay, it's 6:30, we're gonna go ahead and get started. City of Castle Hills will convene into a special meeting and budget work session on our number five on August 25th, 6:30 in the city council chambers located at 209 Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. We're gonna call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. We have Mr. Paul joining us via phone and Mr. Isbrand joining us via Zoom video. We're gonna go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Zavron, will you lead us? Thank you, sir. Okay, first up. Citizen comments, we don't have anybody here with us. Let me just double check the email, make sure we didn't receive anything. Okay, we'll proceed on to ad number one, presentation discussion of the preliminary budget submitted to Bear County as a result of the interlocal grant agreement for reimbursement related to the coronavirus aid, relief, and economic security cares act. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, mayor and council is a kind of a summary of what I have submitted to the county as far as our COVID impact relief through the cares act. Obviously, as it accounts for it, the city is eligible for up to 245,00905. Within your packet is a breakdown by category of expenses related to what we've already purchased and what we plan to purchase to submit for reimbursement through this COVID and through the cares act as part of the interlocal grant agreement with Bear County. As far as the items that were essentially unfunded in our current budget, which speaks to the extractor and dryer for the fire department, the cascade system, and the building renovations for our firefighter quarters, I have provided an explanation for each one of those. I have submitted that with the proposed budget to the county as a request and justification of why these expenditures should be reimbursed, and hopefully they are eligible. The county asked us to complete a preauthorization form, which I have provided to the county as of yesterday. So I'm hoping to hear this week to find out if I will have a preauthorization for one of these three or all three of these items to be eligible for the cares act. Under the breakdown of the equipment for 63,000, that obviously encompasses the extractor and the cascade system. Under the information technology teleworking, we're in the process of purchasing laptops and improving the necessary equipment here for continuing with these Zoom meetings and purchasing monitors for the DIES. Under personal payroll, that encompasses 21,000. That's actually a breakdown of police and fire overtime from employees in police and fire who've been impacted by COVID. Some of the shift changes overtime where we've had to quarantine firefighters or direct exposure to our police and fire employees. From that standpoint, supplies PPEs, PPE. We've obviously purchased a number of masks, gloves. The chief can go more into detail about some of the stuff they have purchased for our firefighters and police under this category. Facility equipment for cleaning services, 26,000. This actually is a breakdown. As of April 1st, we went to three times a week cleaning service here for 9,000. We purchased equipment for $7,000, which is a backpack and two handheld disinfectant equipments to do all the rooms and workstations around the building itself in and after meetings. We bought two ultraviolet machines for police and fire. There were 3,000 each. Those are the little microwave looking that do the ultraviolet to clean them, whether it's keys, wallets, anything that those guys from police or fire have put in there to try to disinfect. And then 4,000 was for the disinfectant that we did of the entire building that time from not only this building, but the fire department and all our patrol vehicles that were done in that category. Building renovations, that encompasses majority of doing the living quarters for the fire department to bring the walls in, change out the HVAC to single out those rooms in case we have to essentially isolate one of our firefighters and that they're not breathing the same air, I assume, in the quarters. Chief can elaborate on that. And then grants the local support economic, which is our item two for discussing tonight about the reinvestment program and assisting local businesses of 55,000. This is obviously a proposed budget, and if we have to do any changes, I have to submit a revised budget. But the idea, if I don't get preauthorization for the fire department, some of these areas, the delta will change so we can add additional money to the grants to support local businesses with that money from that standpoint. So that's basically the budget. I wanted to go over that with y'all to make sure you have an understanding and clear picture of what I've submitted to the county already from that standpoint.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Sorry, Mayor. Do we have any questions, council? Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Rappley, do we have in the budget a contingency plan? I assume the budget is built in that we will be getting these monies. Do we have a contingency plan in the budget in case we don't get the monies we're requesting?
Well, again, I think ultimately that would have to come from the general fund, whatever is not reimbursed. Laura, I don't know, from a line item standpoint, we have a COVID account, but the money would have to come from the general fund, basically, if we didn't get reimbursed. But that's exactly why we categorized it for what the county asked for eligible reimbursements for COVID. I'm hoping this week to get that preauthorization. That's why I submitted it. I actually, I actually submitted it last week. I got questions pertaining to some of the expenditures. I answered their question with more detail. They asked the timeline on those purchases and when the construction of the improvements to the fire quarters could be done. And I said these all could be purchased and construction could be done by the end of September. And so I gave them all the details for the questions they asked and resend it yesterday.
Mr. Isbrand, I see you raising your hand over there.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rappley, just a couple of quickies. Are there any items that you wished you could have applied for here, but we simply ran out of money to ask for? Or is this a comprehensive list that you feel adequately does what it needs to do?
I think it's a comprehensive list that covers everything that we think has impacted us for COVID on expenditures. I feel really good about it, but like I said before to council, I want to make sure that I get some type of green light or authorization from the county before I go out and purchase particular equipment. I made my justification as detailed in the agenda comm about why those expenditures need to happen because, again, our firefighters can't go to other fire stations to clean their gear or fill those cascade systems for their apparatus. So I'm hoping that the county feels the same way.
And just my other question would be, preauthorization is equivalent to a final authorization or no?
Preauthorization, I take it, is that that is an eligible expenditure?
It's eligible, but it doesn't ensure reimbursement yet? Is that correct?
I don't think it 100% ensures reimbursement, but I feel pretty good about it if they give me the preauthorization.
Sure, sure, I would think so. I'm just curious of when we would know final from the county. Do you have any indication of what the timeline would be to close this out completely with approvals?
No, my goal is to call them again tomorrow and follow up with an email and say that, hey, I need to know by a certain point because time is a wasting from the standpoint of getting this equipment and hope to be purchased before September 30th deadline.
Okay, great, thank you.
And real quick on the fire, you know, I feel good about the extractor and the cascade system. Again, as I've talked to the chief, if it's not eligible, I do have funds in the sea that I was gonna use for improvements to this building, but I would look at using those funds to do that project within this budget year to make that happen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rappley, just one question. First of all, I hope, certainly hope that the county will say yes, and you can proceed forth with all of this. On the building renovation, just a suggestion. What you're trying to do is pretty sophisticated from an architectural standpoint. So I would suggest that you maybe, if indeed you are awarded the funding, to maybe get ahold of some architect who might be willing to advise you as you move down that path to make sure you achieve what you're trying to achieve.
Sure. Appreciate it. And, you know, again, as I've gone through this, I've also canvassed other cities about what they are looking at qualifying expenses. And so to make sure I'm not off and left field on these things, and it seems pretty consistent of what other cities are submitting on their proposed budgets for hopeful reimbursement of eligible expenditures.
Mr. May, any comments?
My questions were already addressed, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Paul, yes, sir.
My question, only question with all this is, how do we justify? How do we associate building renovations to COVID?
Well, Mr. Paul, I don't know if you heard Mr. Rappley, and I don't know if you have the full agenda con in front of you, but he's provided a breakdown, and all of that has been explained to the county. And the intent is that we wouldn't move further with anything.
No, I got that here, and I have looked at it. But the building renovations, again, to me, of all the lists, that would be the one they might deny because building renovations, how does it relate to COVID per se? That's all I'm getting at. That was, to me, that's the probable issue that may be an issue.
Well, yes, Mr. Paul, again, in checking with other cities that are doing improvements or renovations to their building as it relates to COVID, I don't think it's too far off. I know of a couple of their cities that are modifying certain rooms to their court.
I'm asking how does it relate to COVID? I can understand wanting to remodel and do the things in, over there, but how does it relate and gives us the ability to go after the, use it for the COVID refunds? That's all I'm getting at.
No, I understand, and I think, again, the situation that our current firefighters quarters are, that they're in a sort of a large area, and they only have a, serve as a barrier between them, but putting insulated walls in between them and construction as far as ventilation improvements would only help that. Again, this is something that the chief has planned for, but it's ensuring that we try to hope to decrease any COVID exposure within our firehouse.
Okay.
And Chief, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that. From your standpoint, from a fight, from a health and safety standard as it relates to COVID, for what your guys are currently situated versus what could be done to reduce that exposure?
Well, correct. In their current living quarters, it's one large room, and there's really no dividers that really isolate the firefighter. So if we do have one, like we've had here in the past, that they don't find out until after the fact they're on duty and that they've been exposed, it makes it much more difficult to isolate them and to keep their belongings and everything isolated. Where if we had individual bedrooms, it would be much simpler to have that, those areas isolated. It'd be much easier to disinfect these areas and also hopefully to keep it from spreading throughout the whole department. And again, as city manager talked about ventilation, currently, it's an open ceiling that's shared by all the firefighters in that room with what we have designed. They, each room would have a ceiling that would be sealed off to that room with their own ceiling fan and their own air conditioning vent. So again, it would just keep and restrict from the particles from flowing throughout the whole room.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we have any further questions?
Does that answer Mr. Paul's question?
Yes, it does. But again, we haven't done the work yet, so they will, you're assuming, hoping, anticipated to prove without the work actually being finished yet, has started. And, but with the explanation of what it's for, and I guess if they don't approve it, we can postpone that particular aspect of it.
Well, Mr. Paul, if it's not approved, again, I can still move forward with assisting fire with the current funds I had budgeted out of seed to do improvements here at this building. I would just shift those dollars within that fund and make that a priority to assist our firefighters.
Okay. I just didn't know whether they approve it before or after the event took place. Before we build it, after we build it, or you tell them we're going to build it and ask them for the funds? That's where I was going.
So we will request preauthorization, and if, once we receive preauthorization, then we will start construction. We're not gonna start construction or any purchases until we receive preauthorization. Mr. Gregory?
Thank you.
Is this the deadline of which we submit these things, or can they be submitted in the future?
They can be submitted within the future, but the issue runs that we have to have either acquired or completed the project before September 30th.
September what?
September 30th.
So by September 30th, we have to send a paid invoice and a copy of a check to show that we have paid for this purchase, whether it's the equipment or materials like behind you that has been already purchased for the framing of this. We send in a check and invoice. And so there's a form for each invoice you have to put down. Okay, project X, here's the invoice, here's the copy of the check, and those are the documents they need to review and see that we have submitted. So, you know, it's going to be extensive paperwork or documents from the standpoint that each invoice requires a form for everything we've done within these categories. But I feel confident between myself and staff that the money we've already spent, that we're going to start accounting for that as far as invoices and check copies to submit as early as next week to start already get reimbursed for this.
Well, I'm working on the assumption that you're not gonna get anything to correct this virus until, at earliest, the spring. Does the clock reset on October 1?
I think that's contingent on this, the county receiving more funds, which as of right now haven't been allocated. Obviously, with the whole pandemic, it's a bit of a moving target, so we truthfully don't know. But we do know that, and it's in our best interest to get this submitted as soon as possible, considering there's 25 other municipalities in and around Bear County that will be doing the same thing. So it's important that we beat the rush, if you will.
The funds are from the federal government or the state government?
Federal.
Federal, and the county is administrator.
Thank you.
And it's per capita, $55 a person. That's why we are eligible up to 245,0905.
Which is another reason why it's so important for us to fill out our census, by the way. No further questions?
Well, just in regards to the timelines, again, like city manager said, we have until that September 30th deadline for the paid invoices. The county is also given, because of the length of paperwork and forms and everything that has to be turned in, they're giving you up until October 30th to get everything in. And at that time, the county is gonna review everything that's been turned in, do an audit of the amount of money that's still been left over if the cities did not spend all of the money that was allotted to them. It's unclear, I haven't gotten any information on exactly if the funds that are left over, but they have up until December 30th to allocate those funds or do something with the funds or return them back to the federal government if they don't have any other expenses that qualify. And I, too, have concerns that after we turn everything in in October, all of us know that COVID is still gonna continue through the fall, how they're gonna address additional expenses that we incur after the October 30th deadline. So I do believe that either the Texas Department of Emergency Management or the federal government will kind of review another program to get us through the beginning of January. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, this is just a discussion, there's no.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure council was aware, provide you the information, because I know this came up at the last meeting. So I wanted to make it clear that everybody is aware and can see exactly what we propose for possible reimbursement of expenditures.
Thank you. With that being said, we'll proceed out of number two. Discussion of possible action on creating and approving a Castle Hills Small Business Reinvestment Program, supported by the cares act and Bear County to provide emergency relief to eligible small businesses located in Castle Hills. I had reached out to the city manager, maybe almost a month ago, when all this, the cares act money was starting to be allocated. And one of the things that I saw was that other cities were using a portion of their funds for grants for small businesses. And I asked the city manager if that was something that we could do. He went and found out how to implement the program, and that brings us to where we're at today. In my eyes, the county allocated $50 per person for our city, and I think that we should take every opportunity to use every bit of those dollars in the city and for the city. Having already allocated everything that we could possibly need, we were left with a surplus, and I believe it'd be appropriate to allocate that to small businesses which are suffering right now. While we don't know how much we will be able to allocate per business, the intent is we will have money that we can, and that's where we find ourselves. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, I just, I want to applaud the city once again for its innovative thinking and dealing with COVID situation. All of us who, all of us have spent time going from business to business over the course of summer, distributing the face masks that were made available to free from that, for them. And I know how immensely appreciative they were of the support that they've received from the city. I think the, one other commonality that we all had in talking with our small business owners is that they all lamented the significant impact that this has had on their businesses, that they have had to lay people off or put people on furlough, that they've seen reductions in their sales of 30 or 40 or 50% or whatever. And I think this is an incredible gesture that recognizes who we are as a community, both a residential community and that our businesses are equally our neighbors. So I have to applaud the effort here, and I would move approval of this item to create and approve a Castle Hills Small Business Reinvestment Program that would be supported by the cares act in Bear County to provide emergency relief to eligible small businesses located in Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. May, discussion? Mr. Gregory?
On the dispersion of the money, is it gonna be on a LIFO methodology or prorata? Yes, but this doesn't tell you, I looked at these requirements, it doesn't tell you whether it is on a prorata basis or is it the first person who grabs for the money, gets all of what they ask for, and everybody else is left dangling?
So I discussed this with Mr. Schnaw. If we needed to add language, kind of like you said, a first come, first served basis. And I will confer with that, and that's council's wish. If we want to add that to the application, if we'd like. But right now, this mirrors the county's requirements and eligibility and the application they use, but we can actually add, if we'd like, language to say first come, first served. Obviously, depending on the number of applications we get based on the dollars available.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have everybody apply by such and such a date? And therefore, you could do it on a prorata basis?
There is, in the application itself, we have September 18th as the deadline.
So we're not giving it to anybody who brings it in there earlier?
No, no, so the deadline, I get, so the deadline, September 18th is a deadline. The idea is that I get all the applications in, and myself and staff will review the applications, and based on the eligibility and what is provided as far as information about the business and the requirements will be determined on funding. If there's only 55,000, we'd make it. If you look back here, it says anywhere from 2,000 to 15,000, depending on the size of the business, one through five employees, six through 10 employees. So again, it's going through the process of reviewing the applications that come in, knowing that there's only 55,000 available right now.
Shouldn't we decide whether or not we're going to do an all or nothing or a prorata basis first? You're gonna have a lot of people screaming and yelling when you're gonna be giving money to churches and businesses go under.
Mr. Gregory?
Churches are not event, there's an eligibility, if you, okay.
I don't know if you've had a chance to read through this. There's that eligibility as it relates to 501(c)(3)'s.
Well, churches are nonprofits.
I understand that, I assume that would apply to them.
And they get 10%.
So again, as I'm going through this, this mirrors the requirements of what the county provides to small business grants in Bear County. And it goes through nonprofit organizations. I think there is a percentage that a nonprofit has to contribute on that standpoint to get funds. But national chains, financial institutions, professional services, which lists physicians, engineers, architects, and apartment complexes are not eligible for this grant. Also, if you've already received a grant through the county, you are not eligible as well, as I've mentioned in the ag comm, because essentially that's like a double dip.
This seems to be very, anyway, I don't think this, I think we're, we can't say whether we're going to give it all or nothing, partially, prorata. We're going into this sort of gray area. When somebody applies for something, how, it's gonna be, how do you justify $10,000 to Big Box Incorporated, and you can't give $500 to a small person?
Well, again, a big box wouldn't qualify, it's a national chain here, so it's not eligible. But the range in value is 2,500 to 15,000. Again, that factors based on the size of the business, you know, whether it's one through five or six and 10 employees, from that standpoint.
Basically, five businesses could get all the money.
Potentially.
Potentially.
This is also contingent on the budget as submitted. If for any reason the budget as submitted to the county changes, of my opinion, that we should use that delta, which would otherwise be lost, to support this grant program. Having talked to a variety of small business owners in the city of Castle Hills, I asked them myself if that amount was significant, and they told me, several of them told me, we will take anything. At this point, whatever we can do to get help, we would be appreciative of.
Mr. Mayor, are you saying that if we don't use it, we lose it?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
And when, when is this last date? We have to determine whether we use it or lose it.
And Mr. Gregory, again, that's September 30th, but the issue that we run into is administration of anything that we'd want to do. So it's in our best interest to do this as soon as possible.
This could come back on the September agenda item to clarify whether or not, or that's too late?
No, sir, because the idea is that we would put these out for applications this Friday and the day. and the deadline for submittal is September eighteenth. Again, I'm mirroring what other cities are doing surrounding us, like this is kind of like Chavino's doing, Selma's doing right now, to help small businesses and then get reimbursed by the county. And basically, the same type of reinvestment program was set up, and the same type of eligibility requirements are same, that the Bear County is using, we are mirroring their eligibility requirements from that standpoint. The application, the program, it's pretty much mirrored from that standpoint. When applications do come in, I will go through the small business portion of the county to verify some of these businesses, to make sure that they're not already receiving funds through another mechanism like the the lift fund that I've mentioned here in the agenda com.
Well, my concern, I figure we have about a hundred small businesses in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And my concern is that four or five could get the bulk of this, and the rest, all the rest of the small businesses don't get anything on a prorata basis, and that bothers me.
Mr. Solis.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but I have the privilege of working for Southside First as vice chair. We were the team that was responsible for the distribution for these grants for Bear County in the, in the precinct one. We had applications over two point three million dollars. The allotment for the precinct one was two point two million. You are corrected the fact that what has to happen is, once you go through the the applications, having worked with lift fund to distribute this, and we just had another meeting just last week, because there were more applications needed, was the fact that what you need to be able to do is first decide who's eligible by criteria, right? Those that meet it, and then you can do a random selection and say every fifth one, every third one, or whatever number, as they are numbered in, let's say they're fifty, when it's all said and done, then you pick the fifth one, seventh one, twenty-one, whatever you decide to be able to award those. That's how you get around the randomization, is people not having the direct shot of being the first ones in or first ones out. Because the reality is, if you go with first ones in, the issue becomes, how do I get my, my thing in first? Most of them were done by links. It was a link that went directly to the lift fund. So what we encourage, and we sat down with our business people, which is what we were asked to do by Bear County. There were four agencies that did it. There was Sage on the east side, West Side Development on the west side, Southside First, which I'm vice chair on, on the south side, and the North Chamber for the northern part. And our job was to be able to walk through the applicants and help them to fill out the forms correctly. The whole thing is those that are affected, if you read the criteria, that were affected by COVID. They had to prove they were affected by COVID, and then they had to prove the number. So the numbers had to match. So you may say you're eligible for five, you may eligible for fifteen thousand, but if it has to have the proper documentation for you to be able to show how you were affected. And once that is done, then the randomization can happen for you to choose accordingly. That would eliminate somebody coming in and being the first one in and then taking off everything right off the bat. So just a suggestion, that's what we did at the county, and and that worked for us. And so the county, like I said, I had the opportunity to work on this program extensively for the county, implementing it, enforcing it, and then doing the public education with the, with the organizations. The same ten percent was there for nonprofits. So you you figure out the ten percent, so they got five, five, five thousand, right? That's what they're going to be able to utilize, if it's fifty-five, fifty-five hundred, and that's only eligible, and those people compete amongst themselves. So whatever the organizations are, if there's nonprofits that are in Castle Hills that want to apply, then once they meet the criteria, which is that the toughest job is meeting the criteria, they have to prove it. They have to show documentation, and that will determine your pool. So while you may have four thousand or a thousand businesses, those that take the time, those that do the documentation, those that fill out the application, it starts to dwindle down.
And and as you look in the grant verification process, there's eleven bullets that they must provide information related to this process to receive these grants in the reinvestment program itself. It's outlined under page two there, Mr. Gregory.
You, Juan, you were saying the nonprofits have to compete amongst themselves?
Correct, because they're in the ten percent pool.
This is ten percent of the fifty-five thousand dollars you're saying?
Correct.
That answers one concern I had, because we've got churches all over the place here, and they could all apply, we only, they can only, okay.
More, more power to them.
That's.
This is, this is intended for each one to be able to apply, and and we don't worry about who's applying, they just meet the criteria.
So the maximum in that particular pool is, is ten percent of fifty-five thousand?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce.
Juan, thanks for helping us understand the concept of this thing, it's very helpful. Pursuant to Mr. Gregory's question, it just seems like it would be hard, once a certain number of people have met the criteria and filled out all that bloody paperwork, it seems like it would be hard to pick and choose who's the best one and who's the second best and doesn't get anything. Is is the committee that you've worked on, would they object to the idea of everybody getting a little, those that qualify, of everybody getting a little something? Or is that not what you had?
That's actually a decision that y'all can make. What I suggested was that the fact that if you have your pool, when it's all said and done, and there's seventy-five people, and you choose, we're going to touch number ten, twenty, and it just goes on a list, right? It's simple Excel spreadsheet, and you're choosing randomly, because they're being put in randomly, just based on their reviews, you can choose it that way. That way, you don't get into the political part of it, like, oh, yeah, he picked his friend, oh, he picked that one, because that's what's going to happen in a small city like this, they're going to all think, my God, he got all his friends in. So the randomization will allow you to do that. If you go with the percentage, the problem is you do not know, the problem that you have is this, you may have a hundred people who are asking for fifteen thousand each. So what are you going to give them? You know, and I understand the concept that anything is helpful, but again, they're going to show you what their criteria should be. Now, the criteria, they say, we, that you can go up to fifteen thousand, but if the documentation shows seven, then how are you going to get a seven? That's the way it should be, right? So you you prove seven thousand affected by COVID, there's your seven, next client, and that that'll eat up your money, but it's also the most fair way to do it, so that people understand that.
Thank you. And again, I think there's a criteria here about demonstrates at least fifteen percent loss in revenue employment period between March and thirtieth. If that's one of the favorable criterias for revenue loss for one of our businesses, probably should get a little higher to offset that revenue loss, from that standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to be able to see where people are going to be showing, the fact of the matter is, the people that are going to, probably most take advantages are the ones that were shut down by COVID-related mandates. Your bars, your restaurants, your hairstylist.
Yeah.
All those people who just were told, close it, go home. They should be given the opportunity, because what this is utilized for, quite honestly, comes a different way. Sometimes it's just for them to buy inventory, for them to get reimbursed for that rent they had to pay while they were shut down. So it works that way.
And rent and mortgage is included as a possible reimbursement in this.
Correct.
And again, and and looking at what other cities are doing and emulating what they're doing to distribute these grants, as Mr. Solis said, that it it's been the city manager and staff to review applications and determine, because it takes out the political side of 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 a business here in Castle Hills.
But most like, like, I think what y'all are very familiar with, much like the filing deadline, there is a time and a place, and you get it in or you don't. Must be time stamped, unless you could do a link. But if you do a timestamp, then everybody understands the rules of the game. If it comes at five oh one, it's too late. So you need to have that very clear and understanding that that's the expectation, because you will have people that come at five oh five and say, what the heck? But just like we have here too, especially for you guys, understanding the filing deadlines, there is a deadline, there is a time, anything beyond is on you.
Did you mail out to everybody and notice that this was happening, or these businesses have to know about this?
No, the way we did it, the way we did it at the, with the county was, we, we actually took the dog and pony show to Somerset, Von Army, the southern sector precinct one. I did presentations, I, on one Saturday, when we did the distribution of the PPE equipment, you know, when they came for their shields and their their stuff, we were inside the the facility and telling people, come on in and talk to him. And so I must have done, I did at least fifteen presentations that day, takes about six minutes, gave him the application, told him to start doing the work. And then we set up as an organization in the biblioteca, which is on Pleasanton Road, and my staff sat with people who didn't maybe know how to do an application online, we walked them through it, we got them, and we were paid by the county to do this. So just like I said, West Side Development Corporation, Southside First, Sage on the east side, and then North Chamber, we were supposed to be the technical experts to help people walk through that process. So we did, lot of outreach, lot of conversations, and quite frankly, you guys are going to be the best guys, because that's what we expected from our county commissioners. They went and told everybody they could on their list, come here, come apply. The threshold for precinct one was two point two million dollars, and we got it done.
And Mr. Solis.
The average one was twelve thousand dollars.
And Mr. Solis, to your point, we're going to have an uphill battle, as it is, getting applicants within the almost three-week window. So there's a lot of factors that are going to be working against the applicant, so I'm of the belief that we need to see where we fall between the preauthorizations and the applicants to best determine how to proceed from there. At this point, I I'm bringing this before y'all, so that we can at least begin the step of accepting applications and giving small businesses the most amount of time necessary to fill out the information, which if you've seen in your packet, is quite onerous, you know, including financial statements from banks and making sure that we're doing everything that we can to ensure that it's going in the right hands. Mr. May?
I completely agree with you, and I think we see the value, and time is of the essence. If there's any fine tuning or or input, I think we can put that on the September agenda, so I would move the question.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Gregory abstaining, okay. Motion passes four zero one.
Now, I'd like to ask the question that I wasn't able to ask. One of the criteria in here was, a small business.
Mr. Gregory, we already moved on from that item. Mr. Solis is here, so we're going to go ahead and jump to item number four, out of respect for him. Discussion and possible action on supporting the Workforce Solutions Alamo on-the-job training program. This is something that I would not have found out so soon had it not been for Mr. Solis, which I'd like to first thank him and appreciate his service to our community. I'm probably going to butcher this, but I'm going to do my best to give my explanation. Workforce Solutions Alamo is basically doing an on-the-job training program, which will allow, it it helps place employees in businesses, and aside from placing them, it also will pay for them for up to two months, which, going back to small businesses, is a huge benefit, because money's tight and money matters right now. I brought this before you tonight, so that we can discuss how we can support this and specifically bring it to the businesses that need it in Castle Hills. And Mr. Solis has graciously come to answer questions.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Juan Solis, three twenty-eight Town View, Castle Hills, Texas, proud constituent of yours for the last, what, sixteen years? I presently serve, if you don't mind, I'll take off my mask for a second.
Please.
I presently serve as chairman of Workforce Solutions Alamo. Workforce Solutions Alamo is one of the twenty-eight boards appointed by the state of Texas to be responsible for workforce development within Bear County and the surrounding thirteen counties. We're about a hundred million dollar organization, about forty-two employees. Our job is to work within all of that to provide training, education, and access to careers and jobs. One of the things that we were able to do, and what I'm presenting to you today, is the opportunity to look at a program, and there's two programs I want to describe. The first one is about for us as constituents within Bear County, the Commissioners Court, Bear County Commissioners Court, took their CARES money and put it into workforce development. This will be the second slide. We'll go to mine, the one in your packets first. And what it is, is that you will see, let me see, yeah, perfect. The history is that you will see that we went ahead and got money in October, in March of this year, from Bear County. Bear County has allotted us to be able to help seven thousand residents within Bear County and the suburban cities, to be able to find a way, who were affected by COVID, lost due to hours, job changes, and the reality. Here's the reality, gentlemen, in the hospitality industry today, there's probably eleven thousand two hundred and fifty jobs, for right now, you can go to work. Problem is, we've had over sixty-five thousand people file unemployment in the same industry. So what do we do? What's the reality? So the reality is, this is a unique opportunity for employees and people to take the initiative to find a new career, make a change, or perhaps to utilize those skills that they had then and now, that they've developed and moved to something else. So that's what this is all about. This program called Bear Strong, Bear County Strong, next slide, is, is, we were allotted fourteen million dollars to help. Some of it came from the CARES money, but also the the county, the Commissioners Court also provided us with general fund money. Really simple of our program. We do outreach, we do eligibility assessment, referrals, on-the-job training, which I'll describe later, and placement. That's as simple as it gets. So who's eligible? Next slide, please. Any Bear County residents and members of suburban cities are eligible. Gentlemen, I can't think of anybody that's sitting around this dais that doesn't know anybody that was affected by COVID, in terms of jobs, in terms of opportunities, lost wages and hours. That's key. That's who's eligible for this program. Also, if they had been affected, as an example, that they were losing their job and it reduced, that's also eligible. We can make the case that it wasn't directly affected, but because the homeowner, I mean, excuse me, the breadwinner lost the job, the other ones were also affected, that also can be the case. However, one thing that was unique in the bottom that the Commissioners Court looked at is that residents who were unemployed prior to March one are not eligible. This is COVID-related. That's where the CARES money came from, the federal government. That was important. Next slide, please. In the next slide, you will see where the county also puts some emphasis. People who are in the foster care, are in the children's court, attempting to enter the workplace, are fully eligible for this program. Those affected are pursuing training in Bear County Sheriff's Office, can come on in. There's no criteria for you, you're ready to go. And for those actually in reentry, giving people a second shot, those that have lost out of the justice system, have an opportunity to take advantage of this program. This is the program, as we look to the next of the deliverables, of what this is all about. They meet the eligibility requirements, they get assessed for their aptitude, this is the key part of it, the assessment, what are their skills? Not just a sitting down and having a conversation about what you want to do when you grow up, but actually, what are the skill sets that you've learned? What are the skill sets that you've acquired? A lot of people don't understand, I'll give you an example. You think of the person that's been running the bar. Well, that person's been handling schedules, that guy's been ordering, that woman has been handling issues for the organization, their skill sets perhaps have not been quantified before. Here they can, here they can see, and then they see a parallel as to where else they can go. So the documentation of the, of the relevant, relevant job experience, they have the conversation with the counselors, like we said, they're eligible for a stipend, and I'll be talking about that in a second. But the thing is also, what we will provide is the services. This program was intended to test our system of how we help people. What else will we be helping people? Let's say you don't have the proper shoes to get to work, we will provide that. Let's say you need a new pair of glasses because you've lost that, we can provide that. You need help with your vehicle, new tires, we can provide that. We will provide everything eligible to help people get into training and stay in training and help them upgrade their family. We all know a job is not just about a paycheck, a job is about respect. A job is about how and where your place is in the community. A job is what you teach your family to understand, and those behind you, that you take that responsibility seriously. So this is what this is about. If you need childcare, we'll also provide childcare money too. These are the ancillary services, the deliverables, that this program will provide. Next slide, please. These are the ancillary services, the deliverables that this program will provide. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the stipends. Most people like to gravitate towards that, and that's understandable. Up to four hundred and fifty dollars. I say that clearly, up to four hundred and fifty dollars a week is what we'll provide when you're in training. While you're in training. Key component, not for being at home, not for being late while you're in training. That's what makes it different. It comes up to about fifteen bucks an hour, which we all acknowledge is a living wage. You know, you hear about people all the time complaining about that six hundred dollars that was given to people. Reality is, we just need to pay people better. If someone's staying home for six hundred dollars a week extra, they're not making enough in the first place. So as you look at this, that's what this comes down to, that kind of money. Next page, please. So really, what's your role? This is what I'm gonna ask you. Identify potential clients. Send them to us. We need all of them. Everyone in Castle Hills who's been affected by COVID could take advantage of this program tomorrow. And then you tell us what kind of training you wanna do. So share the message, refer the candidates to us and support what we're gonna talk about next, which is the OJT program. So there's a number. You can tell them that I had the opportunity to have a conversation with you. That's what makes the difference. So I'm hoping that people watch this, understand it and take advantage of it. Now we go to the next slide. Let's talk about that worksite experience. People call it OJT worksite experience. Next page, please. Or is that it?
If then it's it.
Ah, then you got it in front of you, gentlemen. The work, the objective for worksite experience is this. We want to be able to put people to work as soon as possible. So let's say you have a business and you need workers. They're in our training program. You say, I can take two people and train them to work for me. We will pay up to thirteen weeks of salary for that person to work for you. Let me repeat that. Thirteen weeks of salary is what we will pay for them to work with you. Or ask that you really hire them afterwards or leave them with enough education and knowledge that they can go find a job somewhere else. That's what this program does. Think it's a unique opportunity when you talk about the small businesses here in Castle Hills, and I appreciate the mayor, cause as the mayor said, this could be an initiative that can change Castle Hills works today. Businesses can apply and say, give me one, give me two. Now, you can't replace those that are working for you now. That'd be silly. You can't displace people. But if there is a business, or there may be a city hall, right, Ryan, who are looking for an employee and says, hey, I can put them to work, I can give them a job afterwards, then why not let this cares money offset thirteen weeks of pay? That's what this is all about. We also provide workman's comp, cause that's essential. So the program, what I'd like to be able to do is let Castle Hills, my city, take the lead and show other suburban cities how this can work. I would love for you to embrace the concept and let's take it on the road to the other suburban cities. That Castle Hills is a leader in understanding how to keep its people working. How to give an opportunity, cause this isn't about hands out. This is about a hand up. And that's the difference. Too many of our neighbors are not working. Too many of our relatives are not working. Too many of our clients have missed the opportunity to be successful because of COVID. This is the opportunity to make a change. This program is immediately available today and is available for anybody, once again, that lives in the county or suburban city. So my hope is that the opportunity is that you seize the opportunity and look at this as an opportunity. Now, they will work up to thirty hours a week, as you know, just eligible. We pay for that. All we ask is for you to give them a skill. Give them an understanding, allow them to learn. Now, will they all be perfect? No, we know that. So at the end of thirty two weeks, you say, hey, they were late all the time. They had these issues. Okay, that's fine. Let us coach them, let us teach them. We are responsible for our neighbors as we understand. We are responsible for each other. This program allows you to spread that type of word, not just in theory, but in action. How else do you help their neighbor grow and be part of a community? When you as a council take the initial steps to get that hand up so that we can make sure that everybody in Castle Hills contributes to our economy. If everybody in Castle Hill is working, then everybody goes to our restaurants. If everybody in Castle Hill is is working, then our school districts grow, cause they're paying their taxes. If everybody in Castle Hills is working and this type of city will be able to grow and people will want to work and live in Castle Hills. So why not be the first, gentlemen? Why not be the first? My first opportunity to have a meeting with any city council. My first presentation, but I believe in Castle Hills. I believe in the opportunity that is there, and I believe we can be bold because these are the times where bold, audacious leadership is needed. Not to play it soft, not to play it conservative, but to do that outreach. Cause outreach is key to everything. Outreach is what is needed. So be our advocates. Let's work together and let's put Castle Hills to work. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Mr. Solis, uh, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing for our community. Uh, this program's amazing. As you said, it's not so much a handout, but a hand up to help our neighbors, which that's what Castle Hills is all about. That's the sense of community that we imbode. And to that point, I appreciate that you're bringing this to Castle Hills first so that we can be a pioneer for something that's great, not only for the community, but you know, for all of San Antonio. And to that point, uh, everything's so great. I have to ask, what does this cost us?
Absolutely nothing. Partnership. All we have to do is make sure we get the word out. There was no cost to the city. My hope is actually there's more that's gonna be realized by the city. Once again, when you think about people working in Castle Hills, less time to get in trouble, less time to do other things. More time to contribute is the way I see it. So there's no cost to the city of San Antonio, excuse me, to the city of Castle Hills or the city of San Antonio either, but in fact, they have their own program. They'll be coming out the same manner as this one. The city will be the same for its constituents. Uh, that contract we sign next week. Uh, officially, we've already signed it. However, it gets approved by council the first week in September, and that'll be another, um, this one's thirteen, another fourteen million on that side for them completely.
Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Solis? Mr. Gregory?
I have two.
Let's do it.
Is this, are renters eligible?
Are what?
Rent, people who rent apartments, are they eligible?
Absolutely. As long as they're residents of Castle Hills. If they can show that they have the eligibility, which would be a CPS or something that they're licensed that shows the address, yes, sir.
And the second, how, does this apply to people who have been furloughed?
Yes, and actually, that's probably the hardest question for them, right? They gotta make a choice. Do they wait for the employer to come back or do they just go ahead and jump? What we'd like to be able to do is give people the confidence to jump, quite honestly. You can wait forever for a job that may or may not come back. I'll go back to that hospitality industry. You look at the hotel and motel industry, probably the hardest hit. We've talked to those industry leaders and they talk in terms of the fact that they hope to be at thirty percent by this time. Thirty percent of who they laid off, bringing them back. By Christmas, maybe they'll be at fifty percent. Think about that. Think about that. That's what we need our residents to understand. That's what we need to get the message across. Now's the time. Take advantage of this opportunity. Come train with us. Come seek a career with us. Because now's the time to jump. And then you know what? You're not jumping like normally back in the day where you jumped to nothing. I outlined support services.
I like the, just not everybody who's furloughed is not getting a paycheck.
That is correct.
A lot of people are getting X. So unless somebody continues to be furloughed and they still go in this program and if they've been called back, leave the program?
I, I think what's gonna happen is when they have that conversation, that's probably a case by case councilman, but I really think what's gonna happen is they're gonna have to make a choice. They're gonna have to make a choice. And so once they sit down, yeah, what I would suggest is they go through the system, get eligible, and then have the conversation at that point, because at one point, they're gonna have to make a decision. Am I gonna stick and wait or I'm gonna go? And what I want to encourage is for people to look at the opportunity. And that is dream and go back. So many people get into a job that before you know it, they've been there three years, then five years, and then ten years. And not much, right? Just kinda just doing their job because they're comfortable, they like the camaraderie of the team, but yet not realizing what's above them. How to increase that lifestyle. So we want to encourage that. But you know, it's, it's innate. Some people are risk takers, other people are not. And then this day and time for many of you, if I look around, except for JR, right? Most of us understand when back in the day, when you looked at a resume, you look for those that were long term. You look at a resume today, brothers, and you see jumping left and right. And there's nothing wrong with that. But what is important is that they find something that they're passionate about, that they want to be part of, and that they can make a difference. That's the difference, right? And if they find that job and it's to the workforce solutions Alamo, then more power to them. We're working directly with those industries in demand from IT. Here's the reality. In Ju, in in January of this year, unemployment three point eight percent. Finding people jobs, opportunities, you were finding the harder to serve. People who had more barriers than than the border wall, you know, there was so much stuff that you had to go through. But one of the things that was important was the fact that what you needed to see as a result of COVID, there are people with college degrees looking for opportunities now. There are people who have some college or experience and knowledge that need to get placed immediately. Come with us. Come and call and be part of this. My hope is that you also will put this on your website for our residents to read uh, to be able to see, to call the number, call Elizabeth and get it done. For the businesses that they call the people on the last page, which is Steve Dietrich, Brenda Garcia and Teresa Saldana. There's two different functions, right? One is about businesses. I think the message has to get out to the businesses and say, hey, here's an opportunity for you to train somebody your way. Your way, right? Too many times, people just get somebody and says, hey, well, I do it this way. No, 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 no. Training is the key. Yes, sir.
Uh, Juan, with respect to that very point you were making, how is it gonna work if participants can't displace other regular employees? You know, if these businesses, um, they have to lay people off and they'd be maybe more than willing to train somebody else, but is, you know, but how do you, how do you get around that displacement question?
It's gonna have the conversation with the business owner. What we do not want is somebody to pick up Jack, because Jack comes with four, with, you know, thirteen weeks of pay and lets off the council member because he was there already. So you cannot replace employees. It'll be a conversation that our career workers will have with the businesses to ensure that that's the way it's done. So it's, it's directed to actually supplement what you have, not replace. However, I do see the point that if people laid off a whole bunch of people, then technically that is replacing people. That's the new ones that is there. But if they, if they close the restaurant and just let everybody go, that's a whole different story. Just that it is about furloughs.
Yeah.
It's, it's a tough thing, but that conversation will happen at the point of contact. Getting a clear understanding of who you're trying to fill, what are the good skill sets you're gonna provide? We want to give people skill sets, enhance them, grow them. And that's the key part. Yes, sir.
Mr. Solis, uh, the spinoff beneficiary here really is the small business, isn't that right?
Absolutely.
So I, I can't imagine any scenario that our small businesses here in Castle Hills would object to this program, especially with the constraints that you just laid out. So I have a very simple question. How do we push this forward? Is it a simple resolution from the city council that we endorse this and post it on our website?
I, I would think exactly that. And I also think that I, and and, you know, I get to see, uh, Joe over there so much on Facebook or different things. You guys do a lot of outreach with your constituents today. Think of both of them. Once, the employee, also the small business owners. Have the conversation. Have them call us. Have them call me. I'll have the conversation with them and then we'll refer them to these people on that left you with the deck. So a resolution would be ideal with ideal, um, that you, you pass this concept, you want it to be flourished in Castle Hills. But I also think that there's a role for you to be the leadership amongst the suburban cities. I don't know when your next meeting is with all the mayors. Uh, but we need to be able to look at this and say, we embraced it first, we got it down, and we want others to take advantage of it.
Uh, Mr. Isbrand?
Um, actually, Mr. May asked my question, which was really about how we, to to your words, Mr. Solis, to be, you know, bold and audacious, how we not only support our residents here in workforce development, but also support our businesses. And so my question was really about, um, more of how do we engage our small businesses here to become a destination for those individuals who would be going through workforce solutions Alamo?
Yeah, and I would suggest, you know, and we are available, workforce solutions Alamo is available. If you put together a meeting, you want us to do presentations, we can do that. Uh, if you wanna call a meeting that where you tell your business people to watch us and we can do the Zoom thing, we can do that also. We're totally available for you because outreach is key. The more people that apply, the better. We want people to come forward. We want to be, give people that opportunity and we do it together. And I think that's the biggest thing. So resolution one, meetings, if you want, we will make ourselves available. We have plenty of team members to be able to go make that presentation. And whatever you see out there is is important. And then the other suburban cities, I think it's a three prong effect, right? So that we show leadership as a city, we show progressive understanding of the issue and 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 grow in it immediately.
Mr. Isbrand?
Uh, I, I just, uh, wanted to thank Mr. Solis for your leadership, not only here in Castle Hills, for what you're attempting to do here and all the contributions you make to Castle Hills, but what you're doing countywide and beyond in this space. It will make a really meaningful difference at a very challenging time. So thank you very much for the leadership that you're providing.
Thank you. And this was, this money came from the Commissioners Court, right? County commissioners, the same ones that provided you that other money are providing this program for y'all to take advantage of. So let's do that. Yes, sir.
Juan, how do you get around, I'm sure you've thought of this. How do you get around the situation of a business that has let people go and is using this as an opportunity not to let irritating employees come back, but to let new people to come back?
Um, I think the reality is, you know, a business owner's character, um, one cannot determine. Uh, if that's the decision by some, we're not gonna get into that type of politics. It is possible. Anything is possible. Um, however, when they do the official layoff, it's an official layoff. So there is no recourse for them other than to reapply for their job. And so if the decision goes that they wanna go this way and we are able to provide them with whatever needs they have, maybe it's an administrative assistant, maybe it's a secretary, it's a receptionist. That's the kind of skill set, right? Because we like our people to understand the reality of skill sets. The reality of soft, of soft skill sets in particular, right? The ability to pick up a phone, the ability to have a conversation, put somebody in hold, get stuff done. And the other responsibility that people have not been taught well enough, it's responsibility of getting to work on time. Completing your task. There are some simple things that sometimes, for those of us that grew up in the era that I grew up in, unbelievable that people would still do that. But that's about the training, right? And that's the opportunity. And so when you see you have this opportunity, my, our, our goal is is twofold, one, not just for the employee, but for the employer to get somebody that they can believe in. And not be somebody who just, you know, cause in the past, I go back to three point eight percent. When it was three eight point eight percent unemployment, you saw signs everywhere, help wanted, help wanted, help wanted. And unfortunately, what also came along with that is not great choices as to who you can hire. So they took a leap of faith. Well, here, the opportunity is somebody who's already been assessed. has a little maybe background of issues, and you can go better and look at a little resume, understanding, conversation. This isn't a desperate, I need somebody to go deliver pizzas for me, let me go do this, or that I just need somebody. Because that's what small business people found themselves in early January of this year. The pull was small. In fact, the whole city, quite honestly, had a difficulty with the oil fields, pulled so many people to go work oil. Those guys could spend $70, $80,000. Who's going to compete with that? And now look where they are. They're in line looking for this program. And for my, I can't say it enough. Castle Hills residents deserve the opportunity to work. Castle Hills, uh, residents deserve the opportunity to contribute to our economy.
Thank you, Mr. Solis.
That's it, guys. Thank you.
Um, council, I would hope and encourage that we could pass a resolution and I in support of this so that we could immediately start championing it, championing it for the benefit of our community and the community at large. I'll entertain any motion. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to try to get the language right, that I'm proposing a resolution that would state, the city council of Castle Hills endorses the workforce solutions program, comma, posts the, the program on our city website, comma, and provide opportunity for organizers of workforce solutions to post information at the city hall.
Thank you, Mr. May.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Mr. Joyce. I, I see that we also have Mr. Schnell on the line. Would you like to make any comments, sir?
Uh, no, mayor, I think Mr. May's motion, um, or Mr. May's resolution, um, is appropriate. Um, the only thought I had was perhaps if there is a specific name for this program, when Mr. Rappley and I discussed it last week, um, I thought there was a, a name like on-the-job training or something like that. And if there is a, a specific, uh, program name that the workforce, um, solutions Alamo has, um, assigned to this, it might be good to get that in, uh, the wording of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schnell. It's Bear County Strong, Mr. May, so.
All right, I will amend. Can I amend my own?
Yes, sir.
I would just amend, uh, the references to workforce solutions to include out Bear County Strong.
Thank you, Mr. May. Uh, Mr. Joyce, are you good with that amendment? Thank you so much. Do we have any further discussion, council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you so much, council. Thank you, Mr. Solis, for your time and for your service to Castle Hills and the community at large.
I would ask you that if you would also send your resolution approval to the judge and the county commissioners, you'd be the first city to do that. Let's do that.
We'll have it soon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to go ahead and digress back. We're going to go ahead and digress back to item number three, discussion of possible action on chapter 48 vegetation in the city of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances, specifically Division Two, Sections 48 dash 102 through 48 dash 108. Mr. Gregory.
About 15 years ago, we had a significant oak wilt scare in the city. Initially on friends. And the, the long and the short of it was that the city decided that it was going to help anybody through getting materials if they wanted to buy them at cost and let somebody buy it to combat it on their own lot. Right now, we have on Carrollwood a very, very, very serious and rapidly growing situation of where there are now up to four lots that have oak wilt or signs of oak wilt on it. Moving, and who knows, because it moves underground through the roots primarily. Uh, there could be significantly more people affected before we already know it. This is a highly destructive, uh, disease and goes a long way to significantly reducing the property valuation of a homeowner. Therefore, it would significantly reduce the income to the city. I, uh, have had a long discussion with Mr. Rappley and our code enforcement personnel, person, uh, head of code enforcement. And it seems to me the only thing we really need to do with the things we have on the books, I would suggest is to strongly strengthen the penalty for non-conformity to this thing. As best as I can read under section, uh, let's see, 48 dash 107, the maximum penalty, no, it's section one through 17 under general penalty, under general penalties, is $500 a day. I would raise that to $1,000 a day for the first 10 days, and $2,000 a day thereafter. And then if they do not comply within 30 days, the city go in, destroy it, take the trees out themselves and attach the lean, and the penalties and the cost of destruction to the homeowner. This is not something you can just whittle your thoughts around. Sir, ma'am? Want to say something? It's something that the city has got to be proactive in, because once this gets loose, you could wipe out whole blocks and not know it.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Rappley.
Um, yes, I'd like to add to my discussions I've had with Councilman Gregory. And just as the background in your agenda packet, I met with the, uh, forester last week from A and M to come out and reassess the radius, uh, what she calls a treatment map, um, which has diseased areas, immediate treatment areas, and then the next treatment zone. Uh, and we've actually put the letter together. We are going to be concluding a letter, the map and information about treatment of oak wilt to about 20 residents in this zone. And so we are going to be sending out this letters tomorrow. Um, and so that's what we are doing, because under, I think, 48 107 is what we are supposed to do. Once it's brought to my attention, the city manager notified these residents. And again, that's why I had the forester come out to, uh, update this impact of oak wilt in this particular area. So we can notify them and inform residents of this potential harm and the potential progression outside of this radius. And there's going to be a map that's going to be accompanying these letters so they can actually see where their house falls within these zones. Um, now I could have Mr. Zamarone discuss the current penalties as Mr. Gregory had mentioned. But again, it's up to council to decide how much more, um, enforceable measures you want to take in regards to oak wilt.
Mr. Isbrand.
I, I guess I have a question here about whether this is an issue of, uh, property owners not taking action when they're made aware of the situation versus the city, uh, use of an expert to identify it and then communicating it to them. So it sounds to me like what you said, Mr. Rappley, is we brought in a forester that have identified the situation or confirmed the situation, and now we're doing our due diligence and notifying residents. I'm not sure that, um, uh, enhancing a punishment when, if they haven't been communicated with yet, is, uh, the right course. So I'm a little bit confused about the two pieces I'm hearing here. Is this a question of are property owners not taking action? Or is it a question of us getting them informed so they can take action?
Go ahead.
Well, I think it's a combination of, uh, first of all, the homeowners are acutely aware that something is wrong with your trees. This has been, I mean, you walk, you go down Carrollwood, even I notice it's like white trees. And yet the homeowners are doing nothing. Uh, they're aware of it, they just don't want to do anything about it, and they just don't care. Or they claim they can't afford to do anything about it. The city has a duty, once it becomes aware of what's going on there, to investigate it. And they'll then tell the homeowner, since in official terms, you've got to get your act together, you've got to clear this tree out by X number of days, or you're going to be penalized. So it, it's a clear example of both homeowners who really don't care, who think it will go away while in consequence it infects other people. And the city, uh, when it comes to the city's attention to make the homeowner acutely aware of, we're now aware of what's going on. We've confirmed that the trees have it. You have X number of days to comply, or you will be fined.
Mr. May.
I just wanted to state, I, I share the urgency that Councilman Gregory has brought forward. But wouldn't it make sense, uh, to, well, first of all, endorse what the city's doing on notice? But secondly, draft up the proposed ordinance, get it on the next city council for public comment, which would serve two purposes. One, it would message the problem and get results. But also, I think that anytime, you know, I've made a whole career out of arguing against overcriminalization. So adding more and more fines, I don't know if that's always the best solution. But it, at the minimum, I think if we put this on the September agenda and get it out in black and white, that'd be a good step forward.
The only reason I think we ought to be very heavy on the fines is since I've been sitting on the council, we've had instances where people X dollars, and they said, so what? No, what? And of course, I hate to bring this up, but our president, when he had problems down at his place in Mar-a-Lago, he was fined something like $1,000 a day, and he said, so what? So we let it go 120 days, and then he made a bargain with the council. We can't allow people who have an enormous will to dig into, to say, so what? I'll pay the fine. So I think it has to be enough and harsh enough and to give the, the person with the problem time to rectify it without having a penalty.
Mr. Gregory, I have to ask, in the situation that, that the resident is unable to pay, what is effectively the solution there?
City goes in, takes control of the situation, takes down the trees, and attaches a lean against the house. But when the house is sold, that part of the house, the cost that we did, uh, we take that out of the cost of the sale.
Mr. Schnell, is, I'm assuming that there's no problem with that on the legal side?
I would not make that assumption, mayor. Um, there is a provision in chapter 54 of the local government code that will allow a fine, um, not to exceed $1,000 per day for certain offenses. In looking at the list of the offenses, um, the only one that is close to what we're talking about is a provision that says relating to conditions caused by accumulations of refuse vegetation or other matter that creates breeding and living spaces for insects and rodents. Um, and, you know, oak wilt is, is at least to some extent spread by, um, I, I believe a form of beetle. Um, we might be able to use this subsection as a basis to, um, increase the fine, a maximum fine from $500 to $1,000. But there is no greater, uh, civil penalty fine. Um, the way our ordinance, um, one dash 17 is written, that's a fine of, um, $500 maximum per offense. And each day a violation occurs is a separate offense. Um, I don't, uh, contest what Mr. Gregory said about someone with great wealth um, ignoring the fine, um, or trying to cut a deal when it gets to be a certain level. Um, but we, we can't really exceed $1,000 per day, um, for this kind of an offense. Um, and that may even be a stretch, um, to use that language I read earlier about, um, insects. Um, none of the other things in this, um, chapter 54 on civil penalty um, come close to fitting, uh, someone who, um, ignores the oak wilt ordinance. Um, as far as the city coming on someone's property and removing vegetation, um, and then imposing a lean, uh, cities do, um, do that on occasion. Um, typically, it's part of an ordinance related to, uh, someone, um, letting their grass grow too high. Um, and it needs to be spelled out very clearly, um, in an ordinance. Uh, uh, Mr. May's suggestion that, uh, we bring back an ordinance so council has something, um, finite to look at, um, is a good suggestion. Uh, Mr. Isbrand's comments, um, also, you know, merit complete consideration by the governing body. Um, that, um, uh, sometimes it's, it's, y- y- you, you catch more flies with honey than with vinegar, so to speak.
I think, Mr. Schnell, the, the main issue is under 48 dash 105 that there's no timeframe. So us as staff will go through the due diligence to notify, but there's nothing in 48 dash 105 that gives a timeframe. So maybe that's something council could, uh, decide on a timeframe from that standpoint?
Yes, sir. I think that's a, a good suggestion. I'm, I'm looking at 105 right now. Um, and, um, you know, I think that would help if we did put a reasonable time limit on that. Um, it, it also could start that clock ticking on the X dollars per day fine. Um, uh, which is a little harder to, uh, get the clock ticking on, uh, without that kind of a, of a provision. So I, I think that's a good suggestion, um, as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Paul.
Um, I'd like to suggest that I think Mr. May and Mr. Isbrand both have some research analysis of the situation. Let's, let, let's think about it personally. If the, if the city finds or somehow that I have oak wilt on my property, I'm not, you know, we shouldn't be fining the people because they may have issues putting together enough money just to get the situation solved. Now, that being said, you give them 10 days, you give them 15 days, whatever, a reasonable thing to address the situation. And if you don't, we're coming in, and we're going to have the people do it, and we'll be charging you 10% over the $5,000 or $10,000 for the fact of us doing the management on it. And again, that has to be backed through an ordinance. I think this, I, I truthfully, I think $500 a day is ridiculous. Because here they are trying to put money together, hopefully, to solve the problem. But the problem's going to be solved either by them or by the city, uh, based upon what the ordinance says. That's just my humble opinion from Tennessee.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I, I tend to agree, uh, considering that the treatments for oak wilt can be extremely expensive. I imagine that if somebody's not doing is likely cost prohibitive, and I'd like to make sure that we're working with them and not making it, uh, more onerous. Mr. Schnell, do you have any more comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, if there's no further, Mr. Joyce.
Oh, just a quick, I think that's a, a, a better approach. As Mr. Paul said, gosh, it's probably could take thousands of bucks to take one of those big oaks down. Never mind the treatment, and then if you have to face $1,000 a day, holy mackerel. I'd be inclined more to, uh, Mr. Paul's approach and Mr. May's approach.
Thank you so much.
But just remember when we're, I like the idea of crafting an ordinance for September. Uh, you're just not dealing with the person who has the problem. Their trees are infecting their neighbors. And that is not something that the city can stand idly by and accept. You have to, this is something that moves very, very. If this occurred on a lot on Fox Hall, I'll guarantee you, there would be 50 people here in this part of our demanding action right now. Because if, if it ever got loose over on the Fox Hall area, you would lose a great deal of why Fox Hall is Fox Hall. Well, it's on, it's over and look at Carrollwood, it's loose. I've noticed it, one additional lot over the last few weeks now has, well, I count at least four lots now, whereas recently was just one. So it's moving, and it's moving quickly.
Mr. Schnell, under, under 48 dash 108 penalty, I think that's the steps you, you discussed about upon conviction. So someone actually would have to go through municipal courts, and action would be taken. Then the city would be going on someone's property to go through that process. Is that correct?
Well, we, if, if we want that right, um, we need to codify it. We need to get it into our code of ordinances. Um, and we obviously want the municipal judge to be aware that, um, he has, um, extended discretion in regard to both the fine that might be imposed, um, on a per day basis, as well as the, um, authority to, um, you know, enter an order that the city can actually go onto the property and, and remove the diseased tree. Um, you know, like, like I think many of the folks have said, um, the hope is that this is a last resort that really never has to be done, because we'd like our homeowners to be, um, take responsibility for their own property and for their neighbor's property. because we'd like our homeowners to be, take responsibility for their own property and for their neighbor's property in the safety of both.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Isbrand?
I'm sorry, if I can just ask one question. So, Mr. Rapley, when is the resident question going to be notified?
So ideally, sir, that our letters with the information of this map and treatment process, information that the Texas San Forest, all these letters will go out tomorrow to notify them right now. But again, we don't have a timeframe to say you need to address it by X date. Because again, that's not. Sorry, Ms. Paul?
How long have we known?
From a standpoint that I, again, met with the forester last week who's done the new map of the diagnosis of the diseased area. So from the standpoint, again, it has to have, as, as the code outlines, it takes the forester to come out and do the diagnosis. This came out, she came out late last week and provided us this new updated map. So the next step is to inform these residents that where they fall in this radius map of impacted area.
All right. Well, those of the affected, is there, is there a condition in that letter that says you gotta do X, Y, Z now? I mean, that's the problem. We, we, we inform, we do this. And I agree with Mr. Gregory that we need to, but we need to act and we need to move very fast. But by charging $500,000 a day, to me, that's ridiculous. We just need to get the problem solved.
Well, again, my standpoint, I've been notified as city manager, so I have to get these letters out immediately. Now, if council changes anything on September 8th, we can reissue letters that says, this has changed and you have X amount of time or incur certain penalties or future risk of seeing our municipal court judge.
And, and what is it that the letters will say?
It basically covers that the property identified within this radius map or zone is likely to be infected within one to two years. And I kind of gave an overview of when the forester came out and diagnosed and updated this map. And then I put here, if your property is within the infected zone, the following sections of the code. So I put in 40-80, 48-105, so they can actually see the code from what we are supposed to do as staff to inform residents. Part of that due diligence process that we have to inform them. And then, of course, we provide informational guide for remediation of oak wilt and then the map of the affected area. So that's right now what we do from our standpoint.
Raising the, the fee or the penalty doesn't do anything to change any of that. So we're back to what Mr. May said, we just need to make a good ordinance so that we can act on something in the event that the, that the person that has the infected tree, if he doesn't do anything. I'm not concerned about the penalties. That's, you know, we just need to get the problem solved.
And, and that's why I'm trying to understand what the communication is here. Because if you're sending it out to 20 property owners, that what you just said, Mr. Rapley, that, that's a generalization of what's going on in that area. I think what I'm asking is what specifically does the city do in addressing this with the property owner who has the tree or trees with the oak wilt? Is there any different communication or direction that's given to them?
Uh, no, other than the informational or, and or brochure that's provided for treatment of oak wilt right now.
So we, we don't, so we don't even, so we're not identifying to the property owner that it's your tree or your trees?
Well, they're identified in the map here that shows the houses within the diseased area that's outlined and diagnosed by the forester.
Okay. And I'm sorry, that map shows all the trees that are diagnosed as diseased, not all the trees within the area that could become infected. Is that correct?
Yes, the map just strictly shows the property owner's lot here on this map within the zone. It doesn't go down to the property and show which tree actually is incurred disease or did not incur disease.
Okay. Okay. I got that. So we're identifying for those other 19 or 20 households there that this is the property in question. But I think my question still is, then what are we doing? What do we do to specifically interact with that property owner to expedite remediation of the situation?
Again, what we've asked the property owner is to, you know, take the remediation, remediation measures as soon as possible and submit proof of those to our co-compliance office for, for the next steps right now, because that's all we can do.
Okay. And that's a different communication than, than, than everybody else gets there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I was trying to understand.
Again, I, I think my point is we are just informing them of what has now been diagnosed and been updated essentially. Again, as I mentioned, there's no timeframe to tell them you need to do this by. And, and this is a fairly lengthy process. I mean, we're talking about if, if we do put measures in place, if they don't address that, this, they'll, they'll show up for court. And then, you know, it could take a couple of months. I mean, you know, depending on when they see the judge and, you know, that's why 48-108 says upon conviction. You know, and I think that would, upon conviction, is the, the last part of the city going on someone's property to address that. This isn't something that would happen overnight, I guess you'd say.
No, I, and yeah, I, I understand that and at, at the risk of belaboring this. I think what is of concern to me, rather than us rushing to punish, is to make sure that the property owner in question understands what their obligations are and the impact that it is having versus how others in the area are being communicated to in terms of the impact it could potentially have on them longer term.
Mr. Joyce? Basically current impact versus potential impact.
I'm also concerned if it's going to take two months to get the first conviction, that's two months longer that it can spread through the root system or through a beetle. And we may be fighting a rear action here of letting two months go and have two or three more lots infected and more property damaged because we've got to wait because the letter goes out and the letter comes back. And the letter goes out and the letter goes, and then they go to court. And then six weeks later, they may be able to address that. That's a hell of a lot of time to let this thing spread to the next law.
A wild idea. I apologize, Douglas.
Mr. Joyce, go ahead.
Let me throw out a wild idea. What if the city itself took responsibility for oak wilt? And once a tree with oak wilt has been identified, the city takes the responsibility to go in and take it out. They can offer to the owner the option of taking it out themselves if they achieve it with a certain period of time. And if they choose to do that, maybe the city reimburses the owner, maybe they don't. But trees are so critical to who we are in Castle Hills. I mean, and Douglas is right to, to express a sense of urgency. The most expeditious thing would be for the city to take the bull by the horn and, and take responsibility for it. Now, I know we probably need some sort of fund to be able to do that. It's not cheap to take down those big, beautiful trees. But anyway, that would be expeditious and then it eliminates the whole discussion of letters and fines and all of that.
I'm trying to remember because I know we had this discussion years ago about how much responsibility the city should have. And it, it, it can be an astronomical expense if the city decides to find oak wilt. And what do we miss it? There are areas back there that you have to claw through a forest before you can find some of these things. And it may have spread so radically and so fast, it costs a fortune to kill it. It's, and it was a tridude, remember, was determined back then, it is not the city's responsibility to police oak wilt and to take care of it. It is the homeowners, it was the, eventually it became the belief of that council back then. It was the responsibility of the homeowner, once they know it's there, for them to take care of it immediately. Period. And if for some reason they can't, they'll be fined. And if they can't do it, then we go in and take care of it for them and then they pay, reimburse us. And that's been the basic policy for some time. And, but I think Mr. May has a good point. Get all, codify this into an ordinance for September. He has to think it has to be made abundantly clear. You look, we lose our trees in this city, we've lost really the, a big calling card. That's why I believe we outlawed red oaks in the city. You can't have red oaks. So I'll work with Mr. Rapley and the city, city attorney and anybody else who wants to work with me to get this ordinance before the council in September.
Thanks, Douglas. I just have a quick question. I was curious about the red oak thing. Are they more susceptible to the oak wilt?
Apparently so. And not all oaks. I'm, I'm going, trying to strain the memory of what I remembered from 15 years ago. But oak wilt are especially dangerous.
I, I understand the urgency, Councilman, but, you know, again, as Mr. Zamiron can elaborate, you know, we have to go through that administrative process, even in co-compliance, where we have to notify and, and go through steps to make sure that there's compliance from a homeowner on, on any process moving forward. So this is just the same fashion that we would use. But if the timeline and how council wants to address it, the urgency, I mean, we can certainly move at that pace as well.
This is different than a barking dog. It's different than your grass is too high and you have basically six weeks to cut the galon. This is vastly different. And because there's a true, a true danger here for the city if this is, this gets out and really runs.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Paul?
If I heard Mr. Schnell correctly, of course, the way it reads is if they're not fined until conviction. And so there's nothing that changes in the process by increasing the fee from, I mean, the penalty from $500 to $1,000. Because by the time you're done, if you're, you're still going to be six weeks, two months, three months. And it's still like the same thing. And I think Gregory's coming around to that too. The what list that may suggest is probably a best approach right now. So that we have an avenue to expeditiously take on and tackle the problem if, if the citizen ignores it.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay. Do we have a motion? Or are we going to let this go?
Table this until September.
Okay, we have a motion to table?
So move the motion.
I guess, Council, would you like between myself and Mr. Schnell to draft an ordinance with the timeline?
With the concerns as expressed by the council members today. Yes.
So we have the motion table, Mr. Gregory, Mr. May?
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item number five, presentation and discussion on proposed FY 2021 budget. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to be able to take this time. I know last meeting I talked about, you know, our unfunded requests and our sanitation, cost of living and, and sort of what our next steps are. What, what I wanted to, and, and also, and time wise, as far as asking individual council members if they have certain questions related to certain departments, line items and or funds specifically. So I could come back the September 8th meeting in case I don't have an answer for you or I need some more, staff needs to do some more work. But I just want to take the time with Ms. Vigans and myself, if there's any questions you have on certain areas of the budget, to get those questions answered today. Obviously, on September 8th, we are going to have a public hearing on the tax rate and the proposed budget itself. And then have another agenda item for continued discussion on this particular budget. So I, I'd open up to particular questions from our council members.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Do we have any questions for Mr. Rapley regarding the budget? Mr. May?
Just one real small one. So when we get to the September 8th meeting, you're going to have some answers back from this quote unquote preapproval on the expenses COVID related, so that you could back out those from the final budget?
Oh, I think by then, obviously, we will. Like I said, I'm hoping by the end of this week. And, you know, again, I provided a, a slide last time of unfunded requests. And if we can address some of those through this reimbursement, that'll be the, the time that we can do them. If not, that they'll still be unfunded moving forward for this particular budget.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Isbrand?
Um, thank you. I actually have a couple and I'll try to be super fast with them. Or, Mr. Rapley, if you think it's more appropriate, you can always follow up as necessary. I just wanted to make sure I understood a couple of things, though. On page five of the proposed budget that you gave us, you had the notation there that it just recommended that $30,000 be allocated for the development of a master plan to address long-term facility needs. Is that $30,000 reflected in the budget? Or is it, when you say recommended, is that, is it included in the line item, Mayor, I missed?
It's included, I believe, Ms. Vigans, you can verify, it's under the seed fund that we've allocated the $30,000.
Under the seed fund, okay.
Yes. Just like Mr. Isbrand, as, as I mentioned earlier, we had $30,000 carved out for potential improvements to this building. If we do not, if we did not utilize them, we may be able to essentially add to that seed fund for not only next year's improvements, but also the $30,000 for that study.
Okay.
Forty, page 41, sir.
Thank you. On, on page 16, on the garbage fees, so this builds in your recommended fee, your recommended increase of how much per month? A dollar?
Uh, what we would be looking at right now is about a $1.50 increase to the bill each month moving forward for next year's budget right now. Again, I want to come back to council later this year with a, a more comprehensive rate study. But that's kind of what we are looking at right now within a two-year phase that hopefully gets us to a, a break even point with this fund over the next two budgets. And essentially, we don't hit the residents all at once with a increase of their garbage across the board in one year.
Understand that. And I guess it's the comprehensive study part that I'm asking about or curious about a bit. You know, I, I appreciate the need to not overspend, but I also don't think that we need to necessarily look at every single thing as a break even or make profit on. And I continue to have hesitation about looking at, you know, the tax rate that we look, that we're considering, the certificates of obligation, and then to put on top of that an increase in garbage fees too. I think that's a whole lot to, to add on in one year. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood what you were reflecting in that. On page, and I apologize that I'm not going to go through every single page here, but there were just a couple of others. On page 18, there's line items for website hosting and maintenance for rack space for, and then within each department, there are IT expenses. Can you help me understand the web hosting, maintenance and rack space fees, what the differences or what those are involved?
That's particularly across the board where there are shared expenditures for our departments. And that's how we, I guess, essentially fund Barcom, who's our IT service provider who does the maintenance and either, I guess, Ms. Vigans, as far as the, the, the monitoring of our servers, the, and it's, it's a shared across the board to departments. That's how it's broken up. But it's, it's the pay for Barcom, which is our contracted IT service.
Sure. And what is the total fee that we pay them each year?
I'd have to get that back to you, sir, just the total itself. And, and I could tell you just real quick on a historical, we had a, a full-time IT person. So what we did was change over to a contracted that served that same amount of dollars. But I can get you that total from that standpoint.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to understand what we are paying in whole and what we get for that versus these other fees that we have with, and with rack space, which I don't know what that one is at all. And then the web hosting fees. And then the web hosting fees that are, that are separate separately listed as well.
Sure, I can get clarification and bring that back to you.
I appreciate that. I, my last question, and you know, I would ask this, Mr. Rapley, or a question like this, and I can't find it in the book here. I see, I believe it was a budget amount of $2,500 for newsletters and postcards. What is that being used for? What, what newsletters and postcards do we send out still? I could find a page if you, if it would be helpful.
I see what you're saying, newsletters and postcards?
Yes, sir.
That I will check to find out exactly what those expenditures are. Go ahead, Ms. Vigance.
It hasn't been used in a few years, but it would be any kind of special notifications that needed to be sent out for, you know, residents that we would have to pay for that was a line item that was there for like.
So if we send out informational about services, city services, about sanitation or code compliance, the money to develop the newsletter and would be created out of there. So essentially, I guess we hadn't used it last year, but.
Two years, yeah.
Two years. But you know, like one of my ideas is sending out a code compliance informational brochure. So that would come out of that line item this year.
Well, and I guess as part of my curiosity in asking about this, that this hasn't been used in a couple of years, whereas we need significant upgrades to our website, which is probably where a good proportion of our residents get or should get their information from versus putting a stamp on something and mailing and hoping it even gets there anymore these days. And I just wonder, when you look at amounts like that, $2,500 could probably go a pretty good way in making some advancements to the, the web infrastructure that I know you and I have talked about as well. So there, there are just a couple of things like that, that I think because the dollars have been there in the past, I'm not convinced that we should continue to leave them there, especially when we have several years in which the money hasn't been, been spent and we do know that we need it elsewhere. So those are the questions I had to start with. Thank you.
I, I think 20, the, just throwing this in there, 2,500 gets us halfway home for upgrading how we want our website to look from Civic Plus, based on the quotes I received and I've discussed with you about eventually a certain package to where we want our website to look outside of our free upgrade.
Right.
I think that, that 2,500 gets us halfway home to those costs.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why it caught my attention. I'm not challenging that, how, how the money is used, but as we have to look at innovative ways of getting business done, and we all recognize the importance of communicating effectively with our, our city, that there's an opportunity there. So thank you again for answering those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Isbrand, too. And again, we'll talk further about the sanitation fund, just going back there. But if, in looking at our revenues across the board and balancing the budget and capturing in, as you said, the debt payment, it's a certificate and other expenditures, that was a way of looking at balancing the budget. If we have to go a little further and not increase the fee, we'd have to come up with at least, I think, and I'm just throwing it out there, 30 or 40,000 decrease of expenditures in the budget itself across the board. Is that correct, Ms. Vigance, roughly?
But yeah, we increased it.
About 34, 35,000.
Oh, 40,800.
40,000. So, so in order not to do that, we'd have to find 40,000 to remove from the current expenditures across the board in the budget. So it was one step in balancing the budget as we moved forward. So I just want to give you that background as well.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And my hesitation is that, you know, I think we all want to be cautious that we don't attempt to balance budgets by raising taxes every year or finding new ways to add in fees or increase fees to be able to do that. Thank you.
To address Mr. Isbrand, this was a throwback to what started many years ago when postcards were mailed out every single month to everybody in the city to let them know we were having a city council meeting and what was going to be on the meeting. Before the time that most people had computers. So it's basically, it's, it's a time that has passed and that notification is not necessary anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Real quick, counsel, I mean, I would just say that from the standpoint of looking at our budget holistically again, you know, when we look to try to say sanitation, we'll try to balance it to see that it's sort of a break even. And as I mentioned in previous workshops, you know, our departments have done a great job at seeing where they could find dollars and remove, police actually removed dollars at a certain line item. We looked at fire and even in, in the public work. So I think with removing some dollars, we can maybe look at doing that to a certain extent, but it's pretty, pretty tight across the board. But I'd also like to say that I do see positives in certain line items, as you mentioned, Mr. Isbrand, in IT and fuel, where by some of the things we'll do next year in the budget, we'll be more efficient to save dollars in those two areas. And again, our, our service provider being Barcom assists a number of municipalities here locally, but they're not the only game in town. So again, if it has to be looked at and reviewed annually based on costs, I don't have a problem doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Joyce, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question concerning utilities. You know, it's funny, as I was looking through this, I look at the first sheet, which was administration, utilities was 15,000. And stuff like, holy cow, he runs this whole thing on $15,000 in utilities. Wow. But then I read a little further and it's, it's actually when you add it all up, it's about $67,000 worth of utilities. So the question is, is there a way that we can begin to bring that down? And I know, I know you've heard this question before, Mr. Rapley. Have we done the LED thing? Are there more efficient air conditions we could put in somehow to, to get that number down?
You're absolutely correct, sir. And you know, that, that, that line item services, I think we get five or six separate CPS bills to the city from that standpoint, which the large part is this particular building in the police department. I was hoping again, and I think we've actually helped reduce that energy efficiency once we insulated and removed those window panels out there. I would like to see the long-term effects as it related to our utility bill. But I'm not opposed again to bringing someone in to look at the building holistically from an energy efficient standpoint, which we could do that. And I know there's companies out there that could help us with that and most certainly would like to do that if it's possible next year.
Yeah, and I think, well, one possibility perhaps to, to help pay for that would be possibly the seed funds.
Oh, yeah.
Aren't they intended for that exactly kind of thing?
That's why it's there. And if we brought in a company to do sort of a, a study of, of the energy efficiency of the building and how to improve that, whether the improvements are costs out of that seed fund or to pay them, it would be certainly we'd bring to council to amend the budget and pay for it out of there, most definitely.
Okay, so we don't have to suggest that now? We can do that?
No, no, that could be done at any point. That's just bringing a budget amendment. But it's actually, there's a couple of companies that would come in and do that. I actually had a call not too long ago that was more of a sales call, but I think they've helped out other cities. And I know one in particular that's done a couple of cities, whether it's their convention center or civic center from that standpoint to help with that. But I, I'm not opposed to that and would like to do that pretty quick if possible.
Thank you.
But you're correct, it could be used out of seed.
Do we have any further questions for Mr. Rapley? Mr. Gregory?
Originally, the seed money came to the city under Mayor Smiley. CBS gave it back to us to reduce our carbon footprint. And Mayor Smiley basically then said, give us your wish list. We just buy anything we want to. And he came up with computers and all sorts of crap. And when I mentioned that we should look at solar, it was totally dismissed. Now, this was about 10 years ago. There's been a big leap and you can't find a place that's hotter and more, that solar might be used. I would suggest we take a look to see what solar would cost for the buildings that we have here. That is specifically what the seed money was meant for, to reduce our carbon footprint. And all the other extraneous things that we've been using it for years, no other city is actually doing, reducing their carbon footprint, but it might be unusual if we did what was hoped to be done with the money.
Well, sir, I think certainly you could use those funds, but the, the intent originally by CPS Energy was for an economic development incentive to cities to go underground with a conversion of their utilities. And that, of course, the money then was given to cities to use, but it certainly would be eligible, that, that's how last year I did 50,000 in building improvements in here and insulated those windows for, for those funds. So I think we're pretty cautious on what we'd use those funds for moving forward. And if solar is an idea, I think that would be part of a, a study that someone would come in and, and give us an energy efficient study to say if solar was our best shot here for this particular building.
I agree. And, but reducing our carbon footprint was the primary thing that they told us to be looking for. And you've adhered to that. We haven't been doing that much. We didn't do that prior to you coming here. I have a question on one line item. With regard to the passport acceptance office. Now, we've been, we've closed down our passport office in March. Is it, it's now reopened full time or what?
So it's open full time by appointment and we've actually had a lot of applications done actually in the last few weeks since we opened it back up by appointment. So basically, most, I would say half of March, April, May, June was the timeframe that we were initiating passports. But over the last few weeks, we've been doing it by appointments, even on Saturdays. It's, it's back to an increased application process. I, we've seen a lot of people come through here.
What do you think the expected, this is an unusual year, of course. What is the expected loss in revenue from what we have allocated and, and spent versus what we brought in? I doubt we've been spending what it was allocated. So I just, are we breaking even? Are we behind or what?
The projected for the current year, if that's what you're asking, we put it down, put it to 20,000 in the hopes we reopen because we were on target for probably 45,000 for the year. When it comes to cost, there's very little cost other than the employee that's already being paid for. We really don't have any external or, you know, other internal costs because there's, the paperwork is provided by the person coming to do the passport. So we, we don't, we don't really have any other expenses. They, if they pay for the special postage and they, you know, they pay for that piece, so.
Oh, we, you know, last.
So we're making money.
Current budget we're in, we had estimated 20,000 in revenue.
It's a very, it's, it's, it definitely makes money and it's.
It's historically been very profitable.
Yeah.
Recently.
Other cities have, have started looking at it, just so you know, I've had other, we have had other cities ask about it.
Let's put it this way, I don't really promote it at city manager meetings. I want to keep it to our facility to a certain extent in this area. But you know, we, we did see an increase last year and we put it on their digital billboards. And we do have free space or as part of our digital billboard signage to start putting that back up. And like I said, we've seen an increase due to appointments right now. And I'm hoping that there'll be an uptake in the next few months as we finish out this budget for, for revenue. I think we're at six or 7,000 right now, roughly, Ms. Vigance. No, we have to go back to doing that. I have to put a request into Clear Channel. Again, I was just waiting till we open back up, but we can put by appointments. But I think it's been pretty good from, from when we opened it back up, so.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we will move on to announcements on mayor and city council. We'll start with Mr. Isbrand. Mr. May?
Not tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Paul?
No, not tonight. I think I've spoken enough.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have an announcement or two. First of all, I'd just like to mention that Councilman May and I have been working on this first kickoff of the Business Association. It's scheduled for September 18th, which is a Friday morning, 7:30 in the Commons. And we'd love to see everybody. But what we've decided to do is send out the invitations by hand. So we would like to offer to the other council members the opportunity to do the same as they did in handing out the masks and maybe distributing these things. Because this is really important. I mean, it's sort of a baby step, I guess, toward economic development, but it's important. I think it's a community thing that we really ought to do. So we would offer you all the opportunity to, to hand these invitations out by hand and mail those that, that are not handed out by that way. Hopefully, they'll be ready next week, I believe, Ryan, am I?
Okay, finishing those up.
Very good. So that's that one. The second one has to do with Parks and Projects Commission. Mr. Fentress, who was one of our members, has resigned last week, I believe it was Douglas's appointment. So we need to, I guess the appropriate thing would be to ask Douglas to nominate someone else. I guess that's the way it works. But in any event, the, the other thing about Parks and Projects is I think we've got a number of initiatives underway and some of them will be impacted by COVID. A lot of it is wanting to meet with people, develop a vision and this, you know, the comprehensive plan update that we've talked about. And we can get some groundwork done. But I, I think what the group would like to see is a little direction from council. So I thought what we do maybe next month is put an agenda item on there and we will update you all on kind of what we've been doing for the last few months and invite you all to provide suggestions for what you would like us to investigate. There are other projects that you'd like us to look at. So that's my announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, Mr. Gregory. I just wanted to add that we will be circling back and see how our masks hand out with our council members went at the next meeting. So hopefully, we can determine how many masks we have extra, if, if any. And also, I would encourage council and anybody watching to do your part to start advocating for small businesses as we have passed the two agenda items here tonight, which are a huge step forward for the city of Castle Hills and for small businesses the same. That being said, I will entertain a motion to, Mr. Rapley.
Mayor, just want to remind council again, our regular September 8th meeting, we are going to have the public hearing for the tax rate and the budget. And then any other questions you might have, and then I will circle back on responses you have for tonight. Get back to you on September 8th as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
First, Mr. May.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Joyce, all in favor? Unanimous. It is 8:37, everybody have a good evening.